Yeah, I called.
Okay.
I started recording just so the thing was up and ready before we started.
Okay.
Yeah, it's up now. Rachel. I heard. When did you come?
I'm just moving.
I did it. A little bit, yes.
Hey, Teresa, we're gonna play the Rocky theme song when you come in.
I call to order the Board of Trustees special meeting, I mean, meeting for April 18th, 2023, and the time is now six o'clock. Trustee Johnson, would you like to give the implication?
Sure. Doggone it, man. You're all, thank you for this day and thank you for the people here. Pray for those citizens who cannot be here, that they would, they would feel you, that they would be touched by what we do here also. Be with those who are public servants, who protect us, who are not only right here, but the ones that protect us from foreign entities and give us all the freedoms that we enjoy today. And the families, that they miss them when they're out serving, please be with them, comfort them. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Varyn.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Ms. McKee.
Here.
I move to set the limit of not more than one speech for three minutes length on the same question on the same day for each trustee. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Johnson?
None.
Mr. Evans?
Yes, again, I don't understand, for the sake of our time and the residents' time, why, if you want to limit speech and limit our discussion, just make it a permanent rule instead of having to address it at each and every meeting. It's not efficient, and i- if you're gonna cycle discussion, just make it permanent. I, again, have no problem with three-minute limit as long as meeting materials are provided prior, which, again, they have not been. And one speech is, is just a speech, it's not a discussion. And, again, this board, members of the board that push for this rule routinely violate this rule. So if we're gonna have a rule and not follow it, what's the sense of having the rule? So I'm against this rule.
Okay, Mr. Evans, I know that you have an objection to this process. I will give you an continued objection. Can we move to a vote without further discussion?
I had my discussion.
Roll call, Ms. Varyn.
Mr. Evans.
No.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKee.
Yes. I move to adopt the agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Johnson?
None.
Mr. Evans?
Yes, again, this agenda was created without the input of all trustees. It was the sole discretion of Ms. McKee against even her own parliamentarians' advice to provide the draft agenda to all trustees and then seek their input on matters they wish. I would hope, would have hoped that when the administrator was hired, that she would take over this responsibility as is customary in all other townships and entities, because she is charged with the day-to-day operations of this township. She should be compiling the agenda from the input of all trustees and also her actions. I requested that, and that was denied. And, again, this meeting agenda was withheld from not only a fellow trustee but our residents until the day before the meeting. This is an old tactic of Mr. Carlisle, and I think that's, needs to stop. There's important things on here, or not on here, that need to be addressed, like the setting the date for the memorial dedication. Why aren't we setting that and discussing that? Building maintenance, we need to discuss. We brought it up last year, the doors continue to rust out, nothing's been done, so we need to discuss that. And road crew hire. One guy, one of the individuals that we offered the job to declined because of the pain and the benefits he wasn't provided prior. And there was another applicant, and I think we should be discussing that if we're gonna move forward on that hire or open up the application to others. So, Ms. McKee, you gotta release control of the agenda, give it to the administrator, which is the proper place for it, where she would work with all trustees. So I would move to add, under new business, a discussion for the memorial dedication and a section on discussing building maintenance, which isn't being done. Mr. Johnson's in charge of that, and also the road crew hire.
So I die for a lack of second. Roll call, Ms. Varyn.
Mr. Evans.
No.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKee.
Yes. I move to adopt the minutes from February 14th, 2023 meetings as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Johnson?
None.
Mr. Evans?
Yes, again, these minutes do not properly reflect the actions of this board by not including the motions made per Robert's rules, that they should be included. It's another attempt to try to hide from the public the actions proposed and things that are pushed forward that are needed in this township. If you watch the video versus the minutes, totally different. And these minutes are too much behind. There's no reason, the law requires timely production of the minutes, which is typically the next meeting. Why these cannot be produced at the next, next meeting, I'd like an answer either from the administrator or fiscal officer, but she said she didn't know why the minutes were not being produced on time, she didn't have control of that. So proper administration needs to start now, and that includes minutes, because we need to be transparent with the public.
Roll call, Ms. Varyn.
Mr. Evans.
No.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKee.
Yes. I move to open the public hearing for the applications submitted by Sharon Lance for partial number 010-017652-0000 located on Refugee Road west of Watkins Road to rezone from planned unit development to low-density residential district, which is a R1, with the planned residential conservation district, and the time is now 6:08. The legal notice for the Board of Trustees' public hearing was in Pataswa standards on April 6th, 2023. The application was submitted to the Licking County Planning Commission for a non-binding recommendation on February 13th, 2023. The planning commission, who met on February 27th, 2023, the Licking County Planning Commission Board voted to provide a non-binding recommendation of conditional approval. The zoning commission recommendation to the Board of Trustees to approve the application and was received on March 20th, 2023. I would like to turn the meeting over to Mr. John Singleton.
We received the application from Sharon Lance, who currently lives in Pataswa and would like to build her home here in Edna. She would like to rezone, have this property rezoned, that she bought in 2016, I believe?
Seven.
2017, okay. Rezone from planned unit development with PRCD overlay to R1 with PRCD overlay. And main reason for that is she doesn't want to be in, bound by HOA rules of Watkins Road. She currently lives in an area with an HOA and has, yeah, there's issues there with HOAs, and she wishes to be outside of that. The comprehensive plan does call for residential in this area, and the change would be in compliance with the comp plan. The applicant wants to keep PRCD overlay just to keep future options open. Under the existing PUD, the original plan had 64 single-family dwellings, or 64 lots for this site, and that was dated November 15th of 1999. Most recent plan submitted had 68 lots, and that was dated June 22nd of 2016. Phase three has never got past the initial stages of planning, because they've run into issues with, AEP's got a couple easements that do run across this property and limit what they can and can't do. Her, her plan is to build her home there, and she wants to keep the wooded area wooded and keep things as is and put a walking path down through the, you know, people could walk in this road communities. If somewhere down the line it would be developed under the PRCD, which, once she builds her home and takes part of that acreage away, you'd be looking at approximately 10 homes or less additional to hers, whereas currently you could, like I say, the last plan had 6, 68 lots in it. The planning commission did talk about other things, but what they, what they didn't take into consideration are the existing easements that run across the property and the amount of land that is required for R1. They, they were concerned that by going to R1, you could have potentially 19 or 20 homes coming out along Refugee Road. That is not her intent. Her intent is to build her home on this property and maintain the property currently as it is, and then, you know, see what the future holds at that point. Currently, that is her plan. The property to the east is zoning PUD, which is Watkins Road. To the south, it's zoned R1 with PRCD overlay, which this applies up to. The west is agricultural. The north is inheritance township, part of it is zoned agricultural, part of it is B1 commercial. And the recommendation from the planning commission, as previously stated, they recommended approval with conditions, and the conditions were to look at the possibility of the other zoning districts. They talked about the possibility SDR, which would be a spot zoning. The other was ag, agricultural, which would just create larger lots if somewhere down the line it does split. But Mrs. Lance has requested it to be rezoned to R1, to change one of the others, she would need to consent to that, I believe. And the recommendation from the zoning commission was to approve the rezoning, and the recommendation from staff is to approve rezoning from PUD with PRCD overlay to R1 with PRCD overlay. It does reduce the number of possibility lots on this parcel. That's all.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it. Trustee comments, Mr. Johnson?
I didn't, this was under, this is originally was under to build houses the same as, like, phase three, is what you're saying?
This is phase three of Watkins Road.
So they're just taking phase three out and making it more back carbon, right?
Yes.
That's exactly what they're doing. Okay. That's what I thought, I just wanted to get some of that.
I don't mind answering any questions if you want.
Well, I, yeah, I would, I would say this, though, about it, that, that people want bigger lots out here, they want nice homes on them, and all these little things I think they're doing next, I think, with township. There's supposed to be public comments?
Trustee Evans, trustee comments right now? Do you have any comments, Ms. Varyn?
Are we gonna have comments after all?
I'm gonna ask you.
I'm asking the chair, is there comments after public comments?
We're gonna do trustee comments right now, because we're not, that's not true. That's not true. I need you.
Yeah, that's my question, okay. I do have a question. The original plan, which was higher density, but it only had one outlet to Refugee Road, and that was a big concern of the planning commission, with 3,000 daily trips on Refugee Road, it's just gonna get busier with all the development going on and that, so those, those curb, curb cuts in access, that was a concern. Is this property we talked about a couple years ago that you were looking at to develop?
Yes, I believe I have talked to you.
Okay.
I believe I talked to other.
It was for the widow, home for the widow?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that, that would be my only concern, and is there, what was your take on the zoning commission's recommendation of a different district that had for CER based on your, I know they said it's not your intent, but it might not be intent, but if we rezone it, it's an option.
Would you like me to address what I would like to? Mark for the record, that was Licking County Planning Commission, the zoning commission didn't discuss.
Planning commission.
They didn't discuss with her about that change, did.
The planning commission, yeah. But, did, you had, if you had thoughts on that, because that was one of my concerns, and if that's an option for what your planning is.
I, I care very much about safety. She would need to come over. Would you like me to come?
Please, thank you.
Please, we can, we can get you on the record that way.
Okay, I'm not.
We can't hear you that well.
I, I'm not skilled in public address, but I'll be honest.
Yes.
What I have in mind is building a home for myself and a few other people in my same situation. I was widowed early in life, and I think that sometimes just having others to share things with will make it easier. I'm not building a licensed facility or anything of that nature. I just wanna make this commodious enough that I could share this with several other widows and not assisted living, but self-assisted living. I plan on keeping at least 20 acres for myself, because I wanna build an apple orchard at the back of the property and along the wooded areas where there's already a little bit of drainage issue, so to speak. You don't need to be building comps back there. I've looked over the, the floodplains, and although they say I'm not in a floodplain, I've went there when it rains. It, it stays a little too wet, we don't wanna be building over there. I plan on building my home to the back of a property on the highest area, and what I would like to have, I'll build this first, get it up running, get the things built, the orchards built, et cetera, the house filled. If later it seems to be working out and there seems to be need, I may wanna come in and build a few homes outside of my home for other 15 and above. Hopefully, this also will help keep from bringing more burden to the tax district. Our school districts are overburdened, they've just built brand-new schools and they're full of yields. I ran for school board last time, and I'm greatly concerned that the state stepped in and told us, no, you can't build as big as you want. And now they're stuck with being told no and the consequences. We'd have to be careful what we do. As far as the Refugee Road's entry and exit points, what I would like is one main entry way down on the western side before you get to the AEP, I think their AEP lines, the big lines, and I, I gotta talk to AEP to get their approval, but I'd like to build kind of a visual screen there and have a nice big white road, and then one other road further up before you get to the eastern boundaries, and have them come in should we build more lots. It would be, this is not meant to be some big cookie cutter beige house after beige house after beige house. If we build others later, they'll be individual homes according to whatever the people want, and they'll be on larger lots, or they'll be, I have had the thought that for people 15 and above, we don't really wanna fill with lots. We don't really wanna fill with yard. It might be better that we had some duplexes or triplexes where they have shared walls and very little lawn to take care of, but I'd like to keep areas on this, I've got 50 acres there narrowly. I'd like to keep areas where people could have their gardens. They may not wanna have it in their yard to have to fill with, but they might wanna have a place to go plant some tomatoes or whatever. I, I just want to, my idea here is to build community. So that's my intent, and that's what I have in mind. I don't have unlimited money, so when I build my house, we'll have to get to where we can, you know, meet all expenses there, and little by little. Hopefully, this will happen over time, but.
It sounds like the PRC district is exactly what you described, the smaller lots, some shared walls, but then open space and that.
Lots of them.
So do you have what their recommendation, maybe looking into the agricultural district with that PRC, in a way, would you have an objection to that?
No. Matter of fact, the gentleman who's farming for me right now, he and I talked a good deal, until everything comes, I mean, I'm not made of money, but once the house is built and everything's going along smoothly, he's gonna continue to farm the front of that until, you know, we're to such a point, it'd probably be several years. I can't imagine the front of that property changing for several years. It'll take, I'm hoping we could break ground on the house in a year and a half, but that, I think that, I think that's being very optimistic.
Well, that's, that was one question, then, one question, Mr. Singleton, is would, would that go into that ag with the PRCD alleviate any possible future concern about the curb cuts for refugees? And I know, I know right now, as you say, the one access road, that's great, that's what the commissioner was, and that's what the commissioner, you know, commissioner was saying. Would that be better if she's agreeable to it, to not do the R1, to do the ag with the PRCD?
It would, because the PRCD overlay is still there. And that allows for what she is wanting to do, and with the number of homes and the PRCD, by the time you do the calculations of the net developable space, you would be below the, the trigger point that triggers that second access.
Correct.
Oh, could I have two accesses, though? I, I think that might be like an entrance and ingress and egress.
Yeah, you would still have.
You, I mean, you could, but it wouldn't be a requirement.
It wouldn't be a requirement, but be permitted.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanna make sure, because like, it depends on how it all lays out, and I, I don't have crystal balls, so I don't wanna, like, limit myself to one thing, but I don't want eight cuts in the refugee, that's just a car accident waiting to happen.
Right, and that, that was my concern for some commissions and that, but no, I commend you for doing this, and, I mean, it's a, it's a great goal to provide housing for widows.
Well, it's self-serving, too.
Well, for the company, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, I get.
But it's needed.
I help them, but they help me, it's, it's kind of, have you ever noticed, you can't, I'm a Christian, I've never done a single thing that I didn't get back, so to speak. God's gonna do something.
So would it be an issue, Mr. Singleton? How would that happen?
We didn't advertise for ag, I don't know if you can change it that way tonight. We didn't advertise for ag, we advertised for R1. Okay. Well, it might be a prosecutor's question, I didn't advertise to go to ag, I think you would have to restart it, just change it to ag.
Can we follow, ensure?
Well, you can always live with it, it's my understanding that you can always live with it, John, in a lower grading, just not a higher, so to speak, so if you approved R1, I could still continue on like I am right now with the farmer farming the front.
Yeah, the farmer, my concern is if it's just R1 and, you, you don't know what the future holds in that, and say if you decided you wanna move, or if you wanted to do that, it's zoned that, so whoever bought the property, you could do that, then you'd have those 19 curb cuts that refugees never allowed. I'm just saying, with the ag, it would reduce that, and if, if it's okay with you, I, I would think that would be the better way to kind of proceed with that.
I, I would suggest that at the end of the, of the hearing to table this to the next meeting and get an answer from the prosecutor's office.
Is there a time, are, are you looking to kind of start quickly?
I was kinda hoping, but, now, I don't know if this is allowable, but I would be amenable, if, if you wanna make this conditional to me, to say three road cuts or something, just throw in an extra, I'd concern caution to the market or something.
I don't think we can.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's outside the realm of.
Could we either check with the prosecutor now, or maybe just do it in a special meeting?
I think they're, they're gone now, it's almost 6:30, but.
And if it has to be restarted, you're probably looking at another 90 days, like we told you when we started this, the first.
I, I don't think.
I don't think you need 90, I don't think.
Can we just defer to an R1?
No, I mean, if you switch into ag, I feel pretty comfortable, he's gonna tell us we have to re-advertise that, because I didn't advertise it for ag, and the advertisement was specific to R1. I didn't say R1 or ag, and it is really clear when you advertise how that process goes. I'll be surprised if he tells you, you can switch it to ag without starting over. Wouldn't it be possible, we just continue on as it came to the board, if that's possible? I, I'm sorry, I don't want to be concerning, but I just think.
I would suggest table on giving, I'll give a, an independent meeting. I would be doubtful, seeing that, actually. What's that?
I like the R1, I don't, I'm not really in favor of the ag at this point, I like the R1. Did you, but I like that.
If it's okay, I would appreciate it, and I'd have to continue on and not be in there.
Figure we'll be able to backseat for, 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 because you can't have that lot set that way, or otherwise it's five lots and a, like, three-one number, and so it won't happen.
If you go down and look, you, there's no way.
So.
Plus, if you leave it ag, you never know which way to go because I'm pleased to say that you can't have R1. So I like it that way because...
You really don't want to pick R1.
It's residential, it's not whatever. That's your like the R1. If you like it, I'm happy.
Well, what would prevent them from making the lots all the way down the front? Just each hundred per lot? There's nothing.
Five lots. Three-one ratio. Yeah, three-one ratio. Yeah, that five lots.
The full report, I did see a map where they did show the potential lots and they did show the lots. I'd be more comfortable with the ag if she's issued it as long as it didn't... I mean, I would hope that that was researched prior as their options and that. I mean, if it would hold things up that long, I would say table a good opinion.
I would ask for that right now. Support R1. I think you're on the right track.
I can only give you my word. I... My intent is to have community and ingress and egress I care very much about because often that's where accidents occur.
Yeah. Right.
And I'm... I had had the thought even with, of like a boulevard of ingress and egress, two big lanes coming down, I would want to have, um, turn-in lanes and turn-out lanes to help, you know, ease any difficulties at that point because it is close, not too far from a stop sign. I care very much about anybody that I'm going to have a hand in the future. I want them to have one.
Always, I would have her intent, but I don't think we can do...
There is some option to that also, and that is that she can place deep restrictions on anything that would be split to prevent that.
We could require that?
She could. She can do it, we can't require it. Yeah, she could do that.
But there again, I'm saying, but that's the intent of that's... Or zoning, if we did that with everything, it's a pink promise. You know what? That's where I'm from. Of any future, because once it's zoned itself.
That is correct.
Or any future...
How can it be devised right now? I mean, I'm not sure what... I mean, right now, they could probably sell it.
Right now, under PUD, it has to develop under those PUD guidelines.
But that was sixty-eight lots.
Those sixty-eight lots, and there were two access points.
Oh, two. Okay. Well, that's... They had the same idea.
There was one public access and there was one emergency access.
Yeah. Okay. Well, that's similar to what I had in mind, except just not so full. I don't... I don't... I don't like cookie cutter neighborhoods with just house after house. I plan on living there the rest of my life, so I want it to be amenable to my pace.
I just think we should do a new diligence, but expedite the fashion before we make the
Process wise, you have rest in R1, you have the same act, um, giving a motion for the board whether to proceed with R1 or ag.
Just finish out here and make a motion.
Well, don't we have to have this called up?
Finish out the public hearing.
As we said, to finish out.
Yeah.
Well, our next is public comments.
Yep. Let's go to Ms. Next.
Public comments. Yes, ma'am, please. Thank you, Lance.
I would say I could agree with the R1.
Name and address for the record, please.
Oh, trees over shop, Roy, Roy Trail West. Um, this is a sign that I would agree with the R1. Because with the zoning, you can limit where, you know, you cannot approve of, say, "I'm not going to approve that with a correct access to refugee. I'm going to group it with the access to the interstate." So you have all houses going back. And that comes with your, you know, with your zoning approval or a lot of approval or building approvals. And then my main thing I would comment on is to welcome Deanna Hanson.
No, this is regarding...
Okay. We'll do that. We'll go back to that.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any other public comments regarding the property?
Hello.
Hi.
Rachel's Alasney, one-on-one, four-one, Tulgate Road. And I would actually go with residential as well because of the agriculture, like Johnson said, is later on, they can just be like, "Hey, we're going to rezone it," and you have many factories next to your house, and then your whole yard plots going through it. I would suggest that.
Thank you. I would... Not in the hearing. Okay, we'll just move on over to see what the pleasure of the board is.
Well, I'd like a little bit of discussion after those. I would just say...
Again, we are moving on to the board, so yes, we will discuss it, and that's what we're doing right now.
Okay. Well, I'd just like, uh, regarding Theresa Thomas, the R1, I believe that's required each could have their own driveways. I don't think we can... Mr. Singleton, would that... Can we have a requirement that there's...
It goes on the egress rather than the refugee.
I don't know if we could force the egress road or a separate road for R1.
It would be a legal question, but I'd have to get the prosecutor.
That's right. And then regarding the R1 over ag for warehouses, you could rezonate it. If it's not built, you could apply to rezonate it, so whether ag or R1, if it's where the school was built, it was R1. It's... It can have... I don't think that should be a contributive factor, but I really think it was Georgia diligence, get that legal opinion in an expedited fashion and not let go of Slant's application. So I would move to table to the legal opinion.
Is there a second to table? So it sounds like you don't want to table it as a board? So process wise, I think you may have to discuss with the board, just to remind you, you can either, if you close the public hearing, you have to act within your twenty days. If you recess it, then you have more time, when you're ready to act on it, so you can either close it and wait twenty days to make a decision.
I do have a question in the resolution. You can approve, deny, or approve with modifications, like the prior board did. They changed quite a bit.
But your modification, I don't think can be from one zone district to another without re-advertising. Their modifications could be other things, but you're going from a whole different district versus what was advertised. Can't take on modification right now off the top of my head.
There's no way to get the prosecutors because other meetings, Mr. Carlisle had contacted prosecutor.
Can we approve it with a request for an ingress and egress road? I mean, that'll amenable to that.
I don't think we can do that for R1.
I move to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Is there a second? Will call this meeting?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Key?
Yes.
Well, how are we doing? But they're not done yet. This is...
People with comments are closed.
Move Resolution Number twenty-three dash oh-four dash one-eight dash oh-one, Rick Long?
Yes.
Resolution to approve the request to amend the zoning map submitted by Sharon Lance for parcel number zero-one-zero dash one... I'm sorry. Zero-one-zero dash zero-one-seven-six-five-two dash zero-zero-point-zero-zero-zero. Looking at refugee road west of Watkins Road from planned unit development to low density residential district R1 with the planned residential conservation district remaining.
I'll say. And then on, just for the record, on section one, I'm going to make that approved also.
All right. Yeah, section one.
Thank you.
With approval there.
Do you have discussion with... Is there a... On the album, the second, is there a discussion, Mr. Evans?
Uh, yes, I'm just gonna... Now, I'm gonna vote no on this, but it's not because of your project, but just because I believe it should be ag with the PRCD, see if you want, you want, it'll protect refugee road egresses, uh, because I think this is just pushing it to the future of a possible issue if things change. So I'm for what you're doing, but I don't think this is the proper way to do it. I just want to hit that up on the record.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Key? Yes. Thank you. Excellent. We would want to open this to Ms. Hanson's report, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Dari, if I speak from you?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. This will be the first of what will be periodic oral reports to the board and to the residents. It's my intention that with these reports, although not completely comprehensive of everything, but that'll provide an update on issues and projects that may be of interest to the residents of Etna Township. Sometimes when I make these reports, it may include a request that the trustees take some action, um, but my job is not to dictate to the trustees how, what action they would take or what business they would do. My job is to implement whatever it is they decide to do. So the board is under no obligation, I just don't want there to be any misconception, that the board is under no obligation to take any action with respect to any discussion that I may make when I make these reports. This is the first meeting that is now being livestreamed on the official Etna Township YouTube channel. We have, well, a small sign that says that we're recording to let people know, but we have a bigger sign that has been ordered and just hasn't been received yet. So there's a link on the township website so that residents can watch the livestream or they can view the recordings later on. As far as the Licking County Transportation Improvement District, there are two primary projects that involve Etna Township. One is the refugee road widening, and the Licking County TID has begun the right-of-way acquisitions. Offers have been made to all but one landowner who was out of the country, and the next step is for construction inspection, which will be done by CTL Engineering. Completion of the project is scheduled for July or August of 2024. Um, the lighting that is placed, they made a comment that will likely be temporary as there are backlogs and delays getting permanent light poles, which I think is sort of a consequence from COVID of all things. President McKee had negotiated already language for inclusion in the Refugee Road Maintenance Agreement between Etna and Patasola to ensure that Refugee Road Maintenance Costs from Etna Parkway to three-ten are borne equally between the township and Patasola. The township is currently responsible for all maintenance costs east of Etna Parkway. Then there's also the Pike Street Grant Project. ODOT is involved with this project, and a meeting that was previously delayed due to applications pending for federal funds will be reconvened in the next several weeks. The Schuster Way Dedication, there will be meetings in May for the final hearing on that dedication. Presuming that everything goes as is planned, then the final hearing is in mid-May for the Schuster Way Dedication. There was questions, I know, at one of the meetings about the Safe School Travel Cycle Program. Etna Township was not selected as a community to receive ODOT funding for safe travel projects. There may be opportunity in the future for different funds for the same project, but as of right now, we don't have any ODOT funding. The township is aware that Sheets has been given a second violation of the Licking County, by the Licking County Soil Erosion and Stormwater Regulations. This is related primarily to installation and maintenance of silt fences and control of sediment. Remediation is required no later than April the nineteenth. Noncompliance with this deadline may force a stop work order, so we'll be keeping a close watch on what's happening on this issue. The township is investigating the purchase of two temporary speed monitoring signs for placement initially on Pike Street and Columbia Road, and will be providing more information on this issue as it is available. The Fred Garland Bragg Jr. Memorial has been placed in Highland Park, Highland High Point Park near the gazebo. For anyone who's not familiar, First Lieutenant Bragg distinguished himself by exceptionally valor... valorous action in nineteen sixty-seven while serving as artillery forward observer with an artillery company on a search and destroy mission near the Cambodian border in the central highlands. He gave his life while bravely leading his men in the face of overwhelming odds. First Lieutenant Bragg's extraordinary heroism and devotion to duty at the cost of his life were in keeping with the highest traditions of the military service and reflect great credit upon himself, his unit, and the United States Army. Sorry if I get a little emotional. My son served in the Army. It chokes me up. We will be providing information about the dedication ceremony for the memorial as it is received from the family. And also more information about First Lieutenant Bragg is in a newsletter that's been prepared by President McKee that residents will be receiving in the mail. There is a pond that is remote to the bulk of the park land that is adjacent to Smoke Road, which has caused drainage issues for the neighboring property immediately north of the pond. And this has been an issue that has been ongoing for a number of years, even before the township took control of the property. We've considered several options for remediation that included issuing a request for proposal for an outside company to remediate the issue or having township personnel drain the pond, dredge it out, and permit it to refill. Either of these options would require fairly extensive remediation to the drain system that is currently in place, as well as future monitoring and perhaps future remediation. Licking County Soil and Water said that they're verbally told me there's no problem with a plan that would empty the pond, dry it, and fill it with filter and plant grass. We had a suggestion from an outside company that the efforts to do that would cost upwards of fifty thousand dollars, which included that company providing the necessary three thousand yards of filter. But township employees can drain the pond, allow the area to dry, then fill the pond with the dirt that is already available at the garage and plant the grass. The only cost to the township would be in manpower and fuel, and it will take about maybe four weeks to complete the project, depending on the weather. This pond is more remote to the rest of the park. It serves no aesthetic or recreational purpose. It currently causes an issue for the adjacent property owner, and there is a potential for liability, especially with the schools directly across the street. It would seem to make sense from a safety standpoint to fill the pond and add to the green space that will be part of the park. And I recommend that the trustees move to permit township employees to drain the pond, allow the area to dry, then fill the pond with dirt that is already available at the garage, and plant grass. This would be pending written approval by the Licking County Soil and Water. I've asked for... I got the verbal approval, but I asked them to let me know in writing. In addition, I recommend that the trustees move to allow the expenditure of up to three thousand dollars for the rental of a bulldozer or similar equipment, should any be required. Mr. Colley thought it probably could be done with the equipment that we currently have, but at most, he might... have, but at most he might need to rent a bulldozer. So that's a recommendation that I make. If any of the trustees have questions or would like to move to permit that plan to go into place, pending the written approval of the Licking County Soil and Water.
I still move to allow for our employees, Mr. Cooley being the superintendent of the project, to, no more than $4,000 towards the project to rent any kind of equipment you may need to take care of the pond so we can drain it and make it safe for our community. Is there a second?
A second.
Comments?
Is there any way we can shake a slail or a slope out of the pond? We have swell to drain the pond and then it would run actually down to the creek area at all?
To the creek backwards or?
Well, fuck. To the creek out back?
It'd have to be pretty deep.
It'd have to be pretty deep. Because my thought was is that it's got all the water in that area anyways, which I think it's kind of soupy through there, right? That if we do it with the pond, you still have a soupy swampy area. If you had a natural drain or natural slope dirt that went down towards the creek, when you plant a grass, you'd have a nice, good place instead. You sew that dirt to the pond and cut your trench, drain it, push it off to the side, bring it back up to the?
Well, I would have to reshape it between the pond and sort of the, probably it will drain too.
That's what I'm saying. Would that be something you consider to me? Would I have as much dirt that way? But you need a bulldozer to do that, correct?
Yeah.
Do you have operational skills on the, so that's something you guys can still do in the house? And you think you can do that with the $4,000 you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
There would be an investment of some of the fuel, you know, of course, you know, our manpower and our fuel, so there would be that investment. But in terms of outside investment, it would just be the equipment rental.
Yeah, I don't see that pond so much for purpose at this point.
Right.
And I don't think it's something to invest a bunch of money into to make it a modern pond again right next to the road.
Yeah.
All right, I have comments. To say that this is a remote park, this would be an entrance to a park.
Correct.
So that is not remote. That is, that was forward.
It's, it's, oh, pardon me, I'm sorry.
It's the entrance to the park. It's a natural feature. I actually had a contractor out today that said this is a beautiful pond. He believes it's spring-fed, so that could be an issue with that. The neighbors have had issues with basement issues, water issues. So and even he said that it can fill it in and it's spring-fed. That water pressure's going somewhere and it's going out to the side, and that could cause issues to those homeowners. But again, it's a beautiful, natural feature. We're treating the township like a flip house. Like just, just fill it in, just do whatever. There were no proposals even received, which I'm shocked at. I figured something like this was gonna happen. I saw on the activity report about filling it in, so I wanted to get a professional opinion. And for about $20,000, they can reclaim it. Even capturing turtles in there, bring it back, doing all this stuff to have that, the jewel of, I believe one of the CAC members talks about Etna being the jewel of the East. This could be the jewel entry to our park. And to just do it on a quick motion without public input of, do we want to fill a park in that, I think is a huge mistake. The expenses, again, $50,000 to fill it in, our guys can do it for $3,000, $4,000, but it's their time. They need to address other, other things. They've got cracks, you know, they've got a lot. But we need to invest in our community, and this is one part of it. And what kind of park do we want? We haven't even talked to our planners. Should we have it? Should we not? So I think this is premature. At least we need to treat it to cut down on the smell and the muskrats and that if you don't fully reclaim it. But to, to act without a professional proposal or several, I, I think is just improper, not doing our due diligence and seeking the input of the community where this isn't even on the agenda. And this is big. And that's where I disagree with your reports of you may recommend actions. Those should be in the agenda. So everybody's aware of what's gonna happen. Because I'm sure a lot of the community, especially the, the landowner adjacent, they want that to remain. And most, most other people do, and his concern is if you fill it in with a natural spring, it's gonna cause additional issues with this basement, and that could lead to lawsuits. So I would move that we table this until we get further. I, I know some just wanna shove it through, but don't you care what the public thinks? What the public wants? This is even before public comments. So you're saying, we don't wanna hear from you, we're gonna do this, and you're gonna live with it? After we paid that much for the park, park planners aren't even part of this.
Mr. Johnson, I'll move to table on the floor.
So I, I moved to table.
Ms. Hanson, please.
Yeah, I just want to respond to someone, Mr. Evans' comment. So the concern that I had was, first of all, this is right at the entrance of the park. So it would be even a perfect place to put a, a nice sign for the park. With the schools being right across the street, there's a potential for liability for children that could fall into the pond, especially right now it's not very deep, but if it's dredged, then it'll be very deep. And so I have concerns about the safety issue that would be left if the choose is on.
Hold on one second.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Do you have a motion to table on?
A motion to table?
Do you get a second?
Oh, thank you. Excuse me.
To table.
If it dies, do a lap to a second.
So we have need a?
Can we get a second?
Is there a second to table?
I'll say. A motion to table, what does that give us, though?
If you're table on it, then he's?
Two decades, some research, bring people in, get community input.
I don't.
This is their park. This is not our park.
And if you're seconding it, then before he can afford?
Talk to the prosecutor about liability. Talk to him.
You have to have a vote before you?
Go ahead.
You seconded it, so he made a motion to table. It's half a discussion. You have to vote to table it because you seconded it.
Discussion, I seconded a discussion about table.
Correct, but then you don't have a vote to table.
So my question goes to, so what do we gain from table? And then I, I, Mr. Jeff, you, you wanted to do something about this pond. You worked about it last week. You worked about me before. We got to build this pond. It's a mess. It's not only the guy's driveway. It's all this other stuff. But now you wanna keep the pond there. That doesn't make sense to me.
No.
That, no, it's my turn. You, you wanted to have this. It's a, it's a thing right next to the road, right next to, we have several of the ponds, and one they're in there. We need to have a way to, I'm comfortable with this, all right? And I don't refuse. We have an obligation to save to the children there, that they got in that pond. It's almost a nuisance that's so close to the road. Of course, it makes a nice place to do, but what are we gonna do as a park there? People will come fish in the front along the edge of the road. They're gonna sit there. Is that we wanna see a bunch of fishing around that pond right in front of our nice park? I'd rather have them go over back to the park to fish. So it's not like it's, it's serving any purpose at this point. If we didn't have any ponds, I'd say, yeah, it's a great thing to keep. Well, we have several ponds in back here. So that's my point. If we cut a swale, like we talked about, that alleviates the problem with your spring coming up. If it goes back that way, then that drains back towards the creek. Fill it in, angle, so anything that comes in will go back through that to the creek. We don't have soft spots in the yard anymore like we have. That would have problems in the basement anymore. It will alleviate all of this. It's direct. That's we don't ask, can we do that? You know, that's the program to do. That'll solve other problems we have in that area. So it, it doesn't limit us to where we can, if we need to build any sort of park right there, we can build it wherever we need to.
Well, I asked for discussion for this, for the board. That's what I asked for. So that we can deal with it. Not fill it in, not, not any of that stuff. And typically, you, you do due diligence and you get professionals to get, there were no estimates, no other group. People given, and, and I did today, and they said, what, you, you wouldn't wanna fill it in, and they actually said you would have issues with the spring, with the, now when you're putting water out in that. But again, why, why don't we get all the information since we don't have it and get community input? You say, why would you want a pond in the front? We're not park designers and that, but that's a natural feature, that self-filling that is, like I said, we said it's a beautiful pond. It's the water spring. It's this, and it's got vibrant life, turtles. So, no, but this, this is the reason to get that information instead of treating it like a flip house of just fill it in, put some grass and, and go. So we, we, I'm still, I still, but this, this is, why don't you want the information? Why? It's, we've had this park planned since last year, and nothing's been done with it. And all of a sudden, it's a safety issue? All of a sudden, there's retaining ponds around? There's, we have other ponds in there. Are you gonna fill all the ponds? Kids are going to run the park.
We've gone too far. That's in the park, in the park. It's not at the, at the base of the?
But the kids can get in the pond in the park or next to the park or anywhere in the park. I'm speaking, please.
No, and I'm speaking now, okay?
We have one time. I don't, you have three minutes. I still have a couple minutes.
No, I just timed it. Your three minutes are up. Mr. Evans, I have a question for you. Who did you have come in to access the pond that you just mentioned? You said you had somebody come in and said it's a spring?
Yes, blue view ponds.
Blue view pond, okay.
Do you want the estimate? Because I just got it. I met him today. Again, I saw the activity report. Nobody even told me about this.
What was, what was the estimate?
So I figured what was gonna be?
Okay, excuse me. What was the estimate?
$22,000 for digging out, replating the pond. I could forge, but you know what? If we table it, you can review it. We could look at other, other, and other people come up there. This is a great natural resource, and to just fill it without even having a park consultant?
I'm going to say this. It is a liability. It's so close to the school, and we want the school?
Have you talked to the prosecutor about that?
Excuse me. We want to have the school to have access to the park. That's, we want that, but we don't want anybody to get harmed in the, in the meantime. So we wanna deal with the, that pond, let's say, it's causing that issue.
So you got an opinion from the prosecutor? Did you get an opinion from the prosecutor, Ms. Hanson?
I did not.
Don't you think that would be viable?
I think, Mr. Evans, it's obvious, the number of reports you see of children that fall into retention ponds. My point is that this pond is at the open, very opening of the pot. There's a school, an elementary school in it, and another school right across the street from this. If it is initially remediated, it's gonna require adjustments to the drain system in order to accommodate, so this doesn't happen again, or it's gonna can, it's gonna end up being remediated over and over. If we take care of it with a permanent solution that will not impact the, any of the aesthetics of the park, it won't impact any of the recreational ability of the park, but it will take care permanently of the problems that gives our, the landowner problem and is a potential for problem to the township in the future. Now, it, it's difficult and disappointing that you tasked me with a job of taking care of the pond and making a recommendation. That's exactly what I'm doing here today. But that wasn't, you saw something and that piqued your interest, and so you went off today and did something else. And it's, it's difficult.
That you did not do.
I'm sorry?
That you refused to do.
No, that's not true.
You did not get an estimate. You did not talk to a professional pool or?
That's not, that's just not true, Mr. Evans.
You did.
I, I have an estimate for the plan that I recommend we put into place. And an estimate by an outside company, a contractor, to do what I recommend we do was nearly $50,000. Now, I, if you can, the board obviously can vote not to implement the plan that I proposed, in which case I'll have to go back to the drawing board and figure out what else do we need to do, or what might be an alternative plan. But for the plan that I propose, I have all of the information that I need, and I'm giving it to the board.
You made your decision to fill it without speaking to any professional pond companies?
No decision has been made. I made the recommendation only.
We're gonna vote on the motion.
There's, I think you first have to vote on the motion.
We're gonna vote on the motion for table. Ms. Marion, please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Ms. McKee?
So I'm gonna go back and vote on the original motion to move, where I moved it. So am I gonna go ahead and vote on that, Ms. Marion?
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. You have any?
Continuing with my report. You've heard some discussion about FRAMEWORK. FRAMEWORK is a collaborative, collaborative planning initiative to manage change and position the communities of Western Licking County, including Etna Township. The objective is to establish a development plan and strategic approach to managing growth to ensure our communities remain healthy and are successfully put in position for the future. The most recent meeting for FRAMEWORK was a community workshop. It was interesting to share perspectives with the people at my table about air, about areas that are doing well and things that needed to be addressed. It was great to hear that Etna is perceived as doing well in terms of development. One big takeaway from this meeting is the need for residential housing for the expected 3,000 workers at Intel. The stated goal was providing housing within Licking County to avoid losing residents to other communities. And, and this was according to the FRAMEWORK leadership. We wanna make sure that having mixed uses that are appropriately scaled, conservation, and design quality are, are the important things that we're taking a look at. There's been discussion about the FedEx Lighting and Sound Barrier, the Skanel Properties location. The county has ordered Skanel to remediate the stormwater issues by June 30th of 2023. This remediation may result in the necessity to modify the barrier wall. As far as the lighting and sound barrier, the barrier wall was constructed pursuant to code and pursuant to the building plans. The plans were drawn by engineers who designed the current barrier. We will be meeting with Skanel Properties next week and with a discussion of what, so we can learn about our, what their proposal is for modification of the barrier wall. The discussion of the Rhino Storage on Pike Street, the zoning officer has successfully worked with Rhino Storage to reduce the glare from commercial lighting that was previously approved by the Licking County Planning Commission. The permit has been issued for the final building, and Rhino Storage is required to install the tree buffer with the construction of the final building. Completion is expected by the end of the summer or early fall. Watch for more information on upcoming community events. We'd like to maybe consider having a family movie night in the park. There'll be information in coordination with First Lieutenant Bragg's family about the dedication of the memorial. And if you have suggestions for community events, please reach out to me. Always feel, feel free to stop by Town Hall. I'm here just about all day, every day unless I'm out for meetings. You can reach me on my cell, which I'm happy to give, 740-814-9365. My email address is nhanson, H-A-N-S-O-N, at etnatownship.com. I have business cards, too, if anyone would like one. Thank you for giving me this time.
And I have a question, Ms. Hanson. Brad dedication, he requested Memorial Day, the 29th at?
Oh, great.
What time? At 11:00 a.m.? And he requested that back March 27th. Is there a reason that we're not setting a date and time so people can plan and, and that?
No, if you had, this information was new to me. So I, we can work with the family. And the last I know, I heard the family was supposed to let us know when they were gonna be available.
All right. Well, there's an email here from Jeff Bragg, and that's the date he's requesting.
Okay, great. Did you, if you forward that email to me, I'd be happy to reach out to him and?
Ms. McKee has this, but can we approve this date since that's the date he's requesting?
Well, you should double check with the, the family to make sure that that is still a date they would like. Okay. If someone forwarded me the information, I'd be happy to do the follow-up.
Yeah, these, these are just things that we need to address, so it's not sitting out there and people can plan.
All that email, May 29th, Tuesday?
Yeah, I mean, he, he requested back on March 27th that it be May 29th at 11:00 a.m. And I've tried to get information on this, it's been blocked, but I did have another question on the, the signs, the speed signs.
Yes.
From what I spoke to other municipalities, those aren't really that effective. Ticketing is. I've been trying to move this forward to kind of force that, to start writing tickets Uh, I've been trying to move this forward to kind of force that, to start writing tickets since we have now an officer on each shift. Can we, we can direct them to, what we can do, can we direct them to issue more citations and get the enforcement up so people won't slow down?
Well, so I assume that the, um, deputy sheriffs that will be following will enforce the law. The, the meeting that we're gonna have is to get more information about these signs that, um, at least some communities have used with good results, uh, to remind people about their speed and what the posted speed is. I think where they are less effective is where they stay for long periods of time where people get used to seeing them. But it's just in the top state. So no, you know, of course, there, there hasn't been any proposal made in terms of purchase. We're just gonna get some more information.
I'll just talk about enforcement. I think we, it, the deputies are paid by us and we can direct them. And they've said that if they, if we want them to ticket more, they'll ticket. So I'm saying, as a board, why don't we move forward with that and show some enforcement? Ms. McKee, Mr. Johnson, are you interested in that?
Uh, ma'am president, may I ask you?
Yeah, I'd be happy to talk to the deputies and, and let them know that we would, um, encourage them to enforce the law.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we'll move over to public comments. Three Zeta Shon, forty-four Trail West. Um, one little side foot on the pond. If it is, um, fed by a spring, when they go to try to dig it out, they're emptying out the water, it won't empty out. It'll be, continue to be fed. And then you might have to then adjust what you're gonna do.
Thank you.
Um, but I do want to, as it says, um, welcome you to, to the township and remind you that you are a township employee and you are a public servant of the people of the township. We want all trustees to work together. And because you are, have the jurisdiction, you should be a great communicator in helping them assist to learn to communicate all three together. I would also like, if you meet with one trustee on a issue that involves the entire, the township, that you email the other two trustees, with FYI, met with Rosalind today, discussed this for the parks, met with Jeff, just, you know, discussed to, you know, the purchase of new equipment. So that all three trustees, which are equal members of the board, are informed of everything that's happening in this township. And nothing is hidden from any of the three board members. If it involves financial, I, then I would also include our financial officer. Um, examples like where communication could be improved is when the homeowner contacted Mark. Mark emailed the other trustees, but even though Ms. McKee is ahead of the parks, she did not go any further and explore it. She could have sent out someone to look at it in spark's concern. She could have called the homeowner. She could have called the soil and district worker. Is there a problem? Rather than ignoring it. Another example was when we were, um, the renewal of the insurance. Um, you did not explain the motion before you made it. You know, you could have said, you know, this is the plan set we, we're looking at. If we keep the two cross blue shield at the present benefits, it's gonna cost X. We have a proposed plan that reduces the, um, deductible to this, increases the out of pocket to this and costs this. And then make the motion by motion that we renew with good cost with the proposed plan at this. If she would have explained that beforehand, then it would have caused a lot less confusion with the other two trustees and understanding. Um, it could have cut down on some bickering there. And this is, uh, please, your three minutes. Okay, well, then I can't go with Jeff and.
That's fine, Mark Hanson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gary Burkhold, two five four Trail East. I have several items here. The first is framework. I want to correct one thing. Etna Township was not included in the planning area. That was confirmed at the framework, uh, work session that they had in Newark and any of the housing data, uh, did not include Etna Township and they presented that. And I confirmed that with the framework over there at the T J Evans Foundation. The second, public records. I have a question too. It, it should not take a month and a half to get public records when it comes to the trustee minutes. I made a public request, I've, for the draft minutes, which by the way are also public record. I've only received the February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three draft minutes. And so I would like to receive the rest of the draft minutes. Even though they haven't been approved, they do say draft, I'd like those up to the last meeting. And when this meeting draft minutes are ready, I'd like a copy of those as well. It's definitely, uh, an attempt to keep the public from knowing what's happening at our meetings at timely fashion. The tax incentive review council, the reason that they're having a second meeting is not because a member was absent. It's because many of the, not many, but a few of the businesses that have to record their employment data did not have that data submitted in time to Licking, to Licking County. And therefore they are gonna have subsequent meeting and that date has not been sent. Skanel is one of those. They have not gotten their data yet, and I confirmed this with Gher Licking County. They have not yet gotten their data from FedEx. So that is a problem also. The other item has to do with exclusionary zones. I attended the zoning commission for Etna Township. I should say the planning, the zoning commission. And, um, exclusionary zones for solar and wind came up again. Uh, I reported that that issue had been brought to this board months ago. And I'd like to see that back on the agenda so that we can address those because that is a desire that we protect the township from overdevelopment when it comes to wind and, uh, solar farms. And the other item has to do, um, it's true that Skanel has until June thirtieth regarding the subdivision violations that they have and concerns, but we need to address the zoning violations. And so we can talk about the wall and we can talk about the lighting, but what about the buffering in the trees? Those have not been addressed yet. And I have brought this up month after month after month, as well as the residents on Lenz Road. There have been absolutely no reports on it. So I'm encouraged that now we finally get some transparency. But it should not be projected by this board that once they meet the subdivision regulations, that they're in compliance with the township. And I'll ask my question again. When was the last time we had a zoning inspector from Etna Township that actually walked on the east side of the wall? And I suggest it's probably, it, it wasn't even November second. We didn't have anyone go and inspect that side. They were all on the Skanel side. So please, take a look at what the residents are enduring there and let's address the zoning issues as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burkhold.
Thank you.
Steve Sly, thirteen seventy-two, Lingle Parkway, Newark, Ohio. Also a state of Ohio taxpayer and a Licking County taxpayer, which is township perceived as over two million dollars in funds in two thousand twenty-two. So I do believe that entitles me to, what's my opinion once we're on here that. Um, I've had a Facebook following of a news page I've created. It's over nine hundred members strong. That is growing daily. And I get messages constantly about what is going on in Etna Township. So questions they would like to have answers on. Security cameras. Why aren't they installed? They've been paid for. They've been, been voted on. But there is no security cameras installed. There were security cameras installed. Those were taken down. The bigger question, which a lot of people weren't aware of until I brought it up to them from previous discussions with the, uh, board president, when she talked to me in a July twenty-twenty-two telephone call about having these cameras installed so that she could spot Mark Evans and Gary Burkholder. But she believed they were coming into the building after. Funny that two of the three people sitting at the table up here in front of him did not want a full-time administrator when Mark Evans was the board president. But all of a sudden, they bring on a full-time administrator. Do so at a last-minute meeting on a weekend, knowing he had COVID and could not attend the interview session. I'll resume it from him. I'll meeting notes from him. I'll opinions from him. But just simply threw a name in front of him when it came time to put on the position. And the township is at a point right now where they can either continue with the voters in two thousand twenty-one make clear that they want change. Or they can continue with the mistakes of the past with John Carlisle in charge. Currently, we know John Carlisle is still in charge because during a fourteen-month period where I was involved with Mr. Carlisle behind the scenes, before I got to know Mark Evans more. It was the comments which are on text form and on recorded calls. Where Mr. Carlisle has said he has had multiple discussions with the board president, trustee McKee, about things he thinks should happen during Etna Township. So either he's lying or she is, but we know somebody in that group is. I do want to reach out and say a special thanks to Julie Aaron for providing accurate responses to public records requests that she has the ability to fulfill. Fortunately, she's been stripped of the majority of these abilities by the board president. Stated that at a previous meeting, her being the board president and the township secretary will be overseeing certain records requests.
Okay, three minutes. Thank you. From Newark, Ohio, right? So I want to be.
Absolutely. Yeah, I think you know that, but if you didn't hear it at the beginning, yes.
I did. Thank you. Turn me up the public comments.
John Conover, one oh seven eight five Hall Road. I'm gonna get started and ask a, a Mr. Transparent if he needs an aspirin. His head's been nodding pretty bad here. But I'd like to address the pond. I think eliminating the pond would probably be the best idea for the township. If you never maintain the pond, you have to take care of the algae, the growth, the cattails. Just the maintenance around the pond, mowing and trimming and keeping it neatly clean is a big headache. Safety hazard. If you've got a pond at the entrance of your park, if we ever get a park, more cars are gonna come and go in there. More hazards for somebody running into the pond. If it's crossing the school, you're gonna have kids just tempted to come over and play in it, throw rocks in it, ride their bikes around it. Put their floaters in it. Hey, maybe you might put somebody with a canoe in it. So you'll always have that policing of the pond. There'll be fishing in it. There'll be frog gigging in it. It, it's, it's just a big headache. I've maintained ponds at my farmer's hospital. That's a public place. But if you, if you get into a, you know, a township to where the specialist is kind of out of sight, no tell on what you'll get down there. So I think, uh, dealing away with the pond would be a great idea.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Carlisle. Appreciate that. Sir, any additional public comments tonight?
I have two. And I'm Connie Heim. I live on ten two nine three Smoke Road. And I had been approached by our farm for, um, for Evergreen, for solar Evergreen. What is going on with solar around here? Are we trying to fill up this whole area with solar panels? Because that's not what they want our two hundred acres for. And I refuse to sell it to them because I don't want solar panels, windmills in my area, to my neighbors. So I'm wondering what is going on with Etna Township. They're all on solar all of a sudden. And he told me that every one of these warehouses is going, is, you know, this, uh, solar tank. So I just want to know what's going on. That's one thing I'm asking the township. And how much are you that you could stop this? Or are we just blowing our horns? One other thing, I live on Smoke Road and I've got the biggest pond in my field. Everybody's trying to get rid of the pond. I'm trying to get rid of mine. But it's because of the culvert we've had that we've been promised for ages. The culvert is definitely, it's way up there where the water goes, or just goes out into our fields. We're losing farmland. And I just promise that this is going to be looked at. My mark, oh, there's nothing been done. So I would like to know what I have to do, if I have to go down the north to get it done, and what I have to do to take care of this problem. Because we got about, about three acres and we're paying a hundred and seventy dollars a week. They're just, they're our farm cash rent. So we're putting, you know, they're, it's not fair to that farm. So that's the two things I'd like to know. I want to know what the solar panels are that's coming in, plus all the warehouses. Thank you.
Thank you.
To you, President.
Judy Kapmeier, twenty-nine Roman Clark. Thank you for the segue. I had other prepared remarks, but I will trash those. I'm glad to hear that, so, that, um, exclusionary zones are coming up again because exclusionary zones will protect Etna Township. Several months ago, I gave all three board members a sample resolution that was adopted in northwestern Ohio. A whole section, all of northwest, in Audlames County and several counties around there. They have already implemented, they did it a long time ago, implemented exclusionary zones. And I brought to this board that resolution. I said, all you need to do is look it over. Have it approved by, by your lawyers. Discuss it. It wasn't even, it didn't even make an agenda item. Hopefully now it will because we need to work together. Working together means you're gonna win some and you're gonna lose some. But you're gonna work together. I get, you know, I, I hate the angst that's going on around here. And, you know, I've been here for a lot of years and it, we need to, we need to just do a much better job. Exclusionary zones will set us as a model in Licking County, not a laughing stock. We need to change that image. The only way we're going to change that image is to change it together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, just, so we are talking about the solar panels. Um, I'm gonna speak. Any, I'm gonna speak, okay? Because she just brought up solar panel and so did Miss Connie. I'm tired of you interrupting me, Mr. Evans.
But, okay.
I wanna speak right now. I'm gonna speak right now because I want to address the solar situation, okay?
So then I can.
Back. You can speak. We, we know you can speak. That's what you like to do. Okay, take over. Um, I know you gave us a resolution months ago back in office and we turned this over to Mr. Evans. Okay, it's on record and he was supposed to work with you on that, but it never moved anywhere. Okay, uh, we have it unnoted. We have it on record. Okay? So, um, back in office, you were supposed to work with, or to, to, to work to make sure, you said you would take care of it. Um, and I can quote those to, to compartment. So we hope that you continue to work with her on that to make sure it gets done.
All right, I've got the video. That's not true. And Ms. McKee, you refuse every agenda item requested. Every one. You will not let us discuss anything, including the solar. It, it's, you, you dictate everything on this agenda. You're not even letting an administrator, which she should be doing, take over. So to say that it's my fault that we haven't addressed it? No, I want to move it forward. You refuse to, you refuse to do that along with a litany of other, other items, just like the park pond. You refuse to even discuss it and argue with the residents. So it, I put for, on May second, will the solar be on the agenda?
Again, you will work with that. That would be.
I requested that right on.
We have.
I requested that right on May second.
Agenda is solar. You were supposed to work with her on it. I have the.
Okay, I'll get it done. I'll get it done by May second. Do we have that on the agenda?
That will be the first thing that, since you've been on this board, that you have something done. You've never, you've completed anything. So that's on the record.
By everything. So can I have a commitment? May second, solar will be on the agenda.
Exactly. Yes, for sure. We'll put it on there just so you can complete it.
Judy, I got that.
Okay, perfect. Finally.
Only took, what, ten months?
Well, you had, you sold on to it for ten months. And it's on the record, yes.
She's come in how many times?
I don't, it doesn't, I, listen, I did not ignore her. I told her with the process, we had things in place that Mr. Singleton made it clear that we were protected from the solar. Okay, the tax amendment, which is gonna change as of the last few months. Okay, that we just got from our attorney, that we're, we're working on that as well. So yeah, you were given that back in August.
This is all in the proper, just in public comments.
It doesn't matter. It's a meeting and we're going to get things done.
You guys are so much fun. I missed you. So welcome.
Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, Rachel's last name, 10141 Tolegate Road, Southwest.
Thank you, Rachel.
And I know you weren't here, but previously they were working on my property because it is flooding. And they said it's because of the drains in the front, that's the township or whatever. But my whole property is still flooding where I still lose two driveways. So I would just like that to get looked at since it's spring and raining a lot. Also, with Vance without and whoever else, there was two drain covers. One's missing, so I have a huge hole, which is fun with children. So I just want that fixed too, where the thing is like after your email. I'll just get some help, somebody out there.
Just to let you know, I'd like to let a road crew know about the whole, I don't know, public, did you address that?
I was out there.
You able to fix it or?
Well, I mean, everything looked okay there. I mean, the size of your yard floods won't get to an half, three inches of rain. I mean, everything floods. I mean, I'm not to disagree with you, but.
The hole was.
No, there was a drain cover. Like there's one like here and then like if you go like 10 feet, there's another one. And there was one there and now it's just a hole where it's a huge.
Okay, I'll look at the hole tomorrow. If there's something you can do to fix it, I'll fix it.
I was just aware of one.
Because they would fix it for a while. Was it Rachel, was it?
I mean, it wasn't really raining.
Last year, when it.
Yeah, so the neighbors, they did the stop and work quarter, whatever, and they're supposed to fix it. But I think they also need to be checked on because their pond, their pond has been put in. It doesn't hold any water. So that's fun. And so that's just all still going into my yard. So I don't know what they approved because I've had other issues going on.
Yeah, I saw it. It's flooded pretty bad. Did you guys use any other driveway because of the flood?
Well, so the only driveway that's left open is like my barn driveway, which doesn't help because my backyard floods because of their, where they lifted their land. So it's fun.
Thank you. Is there any more additional? I move that Nita Hanson will be the supervisor over the road department. Is there a second?
Second.
Special Mr. Johnson.
She's going to be able to day-to-day activities of the road, is that correct?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes, we don't need any motions to, her job description puts her over all employees and departments. So there's no need for a motion to put her over these departments. I mean, we're not going to go through motion on everything. I think we need to just start administering this properly and not wasting board or president's time. So she's already over the roads, so there's no need to.
I think we're doing this properly. We're doing it in order. So there's no question about it. I can ask for before properly, in order. So that's, that's all we're going to.
Thank you. Ms. Behren, please, roll call.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
I move to appoint myself, Ms. Rosal McDee, as liaison of the office. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, sir. Evans?
Oh. Yeah, again, this is improper. At the last meeting, you appointed your, you directed that Nita, Ms. Hanson, reports to you regarding the office. I think this is kind of a language change. There does need to be a liaison. The administrator reports to the board. And that's the way it should be. That's the way it's done in every other entity and township. So again, to have a liaison report to or anything is just improper because just as another resident indicated, that information should be shared with the entire board, not controlled again by one trustee. And if there's going to be anybody over it, myself and Mr. Johnson have more experience over the office than Ms. McKee who has zero. So you would think it would be one of us. But again, it's not needed. Right here in job description, she supervises herself personnel and then she reports to us. So there's no need for it.
So just one second. I want to clarify something. You said my experience. I'm in this township every day since I became the president. So what are you talking about? I have a lot of experience. I work with Lord daily. I work with John. I did burn bridges with them. I have a relationship, work relationship with them. I have a lot of experience here in this office regardless of you making that statement. It's not true. Can you continue the lie? Stop it. Stop it. Roll call, Ms. Behren. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I just wanted to make sure that you are receiving my weekly reports that I send. I just wanted, I just wanted everybody to know that I do report fully to all three trustees on a weekly basis so you can be informed of what is happening.
But it did, it did lack many of the items, even the pond, even the, you need to report fully to the full board. It's not just to one trustee.
I don't report to any one trustee, Mr. Evans. I don't.
She continues the lie.
So and if there are, and I asked in each of my reports when I send them, if there's more information you'd like to have, I'd be happy to explain it to you. So.
My point is there's no reason for it.
Roll call, Ms. Behren.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Yes. I move to appoint Jeff Johnson as liaison to the road department. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Johnson? Mr. Evans?
No, again, there's no reason to. And if you're going to appoint anybody, should that be Mr. Johnson? He does not approve time sheets as required.
I do all the time.
Do you not? Do you not? You exceed the budget expenditures that are approved and various other issues. So again, the biggest thing is a liaison isn't necessary. According to the job description, our administrator is in charge of that and she reports to the board.
Roll call, Ms. Behren.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. I move to approve the new jan to quote, to clean the carpets, tile and windows. Is there a second? Second in your package, hopefully.
Second.
Discussion, Mr.?
I have some to say. I just wanted you to know, Jeff, that is the company we've used before. James is the one. We haven't cleaned them since right before COVID because we were going to bring them out and we shut down for COVID. But this is the gentleman that we have brought out to do the floors and carpets and overall cleaning.
We do the special in addition to our regular.
Yes, it is the same company we've used before.
We haven't used it in a while.
No, we have not.
Definitely need some again.
Okay.
Mr. Evans?
Is this different than the quote that was provided before? Is this just for one-time cleaning or is this for continuing cleaning?
So one-time cleaning, which would be cleaning.
Just one time?
Yeah.
Wasn't there a continuing thing in the other quotes?
We're just the special, we're just the special this one.
Okay, I want to make sure nothing's missing. Do we still need somebody for ongoing?
Right now, we're discussing this one. Did you get to?
I think I, oh yeah, you're right.
You saw what's the total.
Oh, the total. It's $1,267.56. It breaks it down there. But that's your total. Roll call, Ms. Behren.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. I move to authorize expenditure of $140,214.34 for the two shared cruisers. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Evans?
Yes, where's the quotes? I've been asking for, there's no quotes here. I've been asking for the quotes. They have not been provided. They're not here to give us. And then do we have the quotes? Well, Ms. Hanson?
I don't have quotes.
Mr. Evans, this is the final that came from Lieutenant Carson from Licking County Sheriff's Office.
Right, he had given you and.
Oh, I can get them to you. I can get them. It's not wrong. But this is the total. Because there's, I don't know if you know this, there's a lot that goes to these one of these cruisers, from the lights to the, to the computer and the, and the, and the, all of that stuff. So this is your total. So I can get the quotes to you.
It probably should have been provided to the board, but I have a question. We approved the deputies and cruisers last year.
Correct.
We had a quote last fall, far significant savings over this. I think each cruiser was low 50s. I believe it was like 105,000 for the total. Now, I've got an email here from Lieutenant Carson asking that these cruisers be ordered back in February because the deputies were coming out now.
Correct.
Why, why the delay? And the delay has apparently cost us $25,000 to $30,000. If we would have just ordered them last fall when we approved it and he provided the initial quote, we would have saved $25,000 to $30,000.
Okay, so let me answer that because the fact that we asked him to order those before, he couldn't get them. So that's why we never got them, okay? And as you know, it was a big thing, big deal about chips, getting cruisers, getting cars, okay? So this is the first time that he's been able since last year to now to get the cruisers. So this is what, and the prices went up. Everything went up. Food's gone up. Everything's gone up in prices. So no, we didn't delay anything, not as a township. We didn't do that. That was on their end. Okay, they could not get the cruisers. So let's be honest to the public again. Let's not lie again, okay? Stop doing that to make it look like we as a township aren't doing our job, or the board are not doing our job. It's not true, Mr. Evans. Stop the lies. Stop the lies.
February 13th.
I get the date.
I have the quotes in hand. These need to be ordered sooner than later.
And we asked.
It's two months later.
Mr. Evans, he came, listen, he came into this township and sat out and met with me and Mrs. Brown. When he did come to us, he blew us off several months. It's not on us. It's not on us. So we can, we can talk about it with him on the phone. It's not a problem because you're lying to the public again.
I think that cost the cruisers initially that you're talking about was the basic cruiser.
Well, see, this is what all of us have had.
And even in Lieutenant Carson's response, he said it's gone up over time. The initial quote isn't valid because it's only valid for a certain time. Believe me, I've been dealing with this and again, the delays are costing us $25,000 to $30,000. And even not the delays.
Right, it's a lot to it. It's a lot to it. The deep holes.
He says we need them in February. We have the deputies now. We don't have the cars. Sorry, I'm too much behind on this.
Mr. Evans, he made it clear that we can. We just, right, right, right. We could meet us back in February. He just met with us. Correct. And we're going to get the cars now. I'm telling you, Mr. Evans, you have to stop lying. Stop it.
That's not what the email states.
Yeah, stop it. Stop telling tips. Stop it. Okay, please.
Doesn't matter.
Yes, go for a vote, Mrs. Behren.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. Oh, let me say yes, wow.
Because we need them, but we're paying current costs more.
Yeah.
Thanks for blanking my day.
I move Resolution 23041802 to approve the purchase orders as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. I'll make a discussion. Where's, where's the?
This one about the purchase order?
Yeah, probably under your packet.
I didn't see it.
There's one right here. There's one here and one here, right?
Because I want to make sure there's one right here where.
What type's the funeral, $1,000?
Right, that's exactly where I was. Correct. So we are, the day funeral service, we didn't approve that, so it's on here to pay it. And I don't, as a board, we have not went through enough. We don't have the information that's correct in order to pay the services. So we, I would, I would recommend that we don't pay that $995 for today funeral service for the indigent cremation. Is there a second?
But you already have a motion on the board. So you just need to determine which purchase order resolution you approve.
That would be.
The one with it or without?
So we approve the one with, I would say to approve the one without it.
So your motion is for the one without it?
Correct.
And Jeff, you're seconding the one without it for the record?
A discussion, Mr. Evans?
Yes, this is another matter that's been ignored for six months. The fiscal officer and I were trying to get this addressed and we had an opportunity after the first 60 days that we could pay this and be reimbursed. That's gone. So now this is costing the township $1,000, or $995. The individual is indigent. He was registered to vote there. He, when he went into hospital, that's the address he gave. Everything's provided for him. We are bound to pay this. And this has been ignored by Ms. McKee for six months. And our fiscal officer and I are trying to get this through. We got more from the board in the election. They have all the information needed, but again, more delay. We have an obligation to pay this. There's nothing out there that shows a different address. I mean, beside finding his body in the house, there's, you can't get any more definitive. And this board refuses to say yes or no. They just let it drag on and it's not. Why we're doing this in a funeral home that took care of this individual when he passed, that's not right. This decision should have been made, like I said, over four months ago and we wouldn't have been reimbursed. Now we can't. We had 60 days and now we're going to delay it even further? There's no information. Our secretary's had all the information. When we got the voting record, she said I already had that. What, what more is needed for this? I don't understand. I mean, they even sent a screenshot of the death certificate showing his address. So there's not one item showing a different address. It needs to be paid before a lawsuit. There's been lawsuits over stuff like this.
Let me just ask, we were dealing with this since months and months ago. He's right about that. And we worked with the prosecutor and they came up with their findings of how we should deal with this. I'm going to ask one question, Mr. Evans. Because we were in touch with the company, cremation company. Did you reach out to them in the next, in the last several months?
Have I?
Did you reach out? Okay, that's all we need. I'm going to move it over to you now. Thanks, Mrs.
I was just going to say that the information that I was provided today is not a screenshot of a death certificate. It's a screenshot of like a computer screen. So I did reach out to try to get a copy of the actual death certificate. I spoke to the attorney who signed as the authorized agent. And so as soon as I can just finish the investigation on this, like I told you that I would, then we'll be able to make a recommendation about how the board should proceed.
But if, for some members of this board, it came into death certificate, that should have been requested over four months ago. That's what I said. This has been dropped and until Julie and I started getting back into it and actually proposed, and I asked her to put this on so we could address it, it would have just been ignored.
Yeah, three minutes are up. This, this, this is, well, do you have anything on this at all?
Not that I haven't already provided and I've given Nita the answer. They, in my opinion, for the prosecutor's office, they still have not proven several times that Nita's going to. They, in, in my opinion, for the prosecutor's office, they still have not proven several times that Anita's going to.
Follow her, okay. Thank you. Thanks, thank you. Okay. I need a roll call.
And we're voting on the one without.
Without, correct.
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Yes. And I move to ratify the payment for the Bill Eschong on payment listing. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Evans?
What is the Media Network of Central Ohio?
And just to clarify, this is also going to be the one without the funeral service?
Yes.
But she's asking about the Media Network of Central Ohio.
Correct. Thank you. Thanks.
And so should I contain funeral services?
All right, um, roll call.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. Okay, I'll turn it over to the fiscal officer, Ms. Mary.
Uh, did you want to do that, make a transfer first? No, I think that's why she's given it to you. I, I made a copy, so if you. Okay, you send them. I'm just requesting that I be able to transfer money between these funds to cover the expenses within them, all with her general fund.
Okay, I'll motion to transfer funds as listed.
Okay, I'll go ahead and second.
I'll second. And in our discussion, um, instead of having, you have to read all of this. Julia, I'll just make sure these are listed in the minutes to show which ones are numbered.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Discussion, Mr. Mr. Evans?
No.
None.
No, she's.
Actually.
Oh.
Actually, I have a question. Is this to get through the rest of the year as calculated?
On some of them, yes.
Okay, that's what it looks like you're trying to put up in the rest of the year, that's correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Roll call, Ms. Mary.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
And then I had a comment under, since it's fiscal officer, I was going to ask if I could make a comment.
Oh, you do?
Okay. Um, effective immediately, I will no longer be responsible for receiving or fulfilling public records requests. Uh, these requirement, this request, the request will need to be with the responsibility of the board now.
Okay, so Ms. Mary, let me understand what you're saying, please. Can you make it move? In front of you?
The public records request will not be my responsibility anymore. I will comply with what I need to comply, but I'm not going to keep the database or respond to all the emails that come in.
Okay, um, is, that's something our administrator can look into further in regards to under Ohio Vice Code?
Well, I will tell you, that's the question I had as I was listening, was whether that is an option under the Ohio Vice Code. I just don't know the answer.
Okay, thank you. So she'll check into it.
I talked with the prosecutor, and it does not state that I am assigned those duties of maintaining the database or responding to the records. So if you want to follow up, it was more, more calls here.
Sure.
And I.
Yeah, I just don't know as I sit here.
Yeah, right, right.
And, and I believe, uh, the, the driving force on this is access to records has been withdrawn from the fiscal officer and been given to the president and the secretary, and they have refused to respond or provide those records so fiscal officer can properly respond to records requests. Uh, so she cannot fulfill her duties. And, um, therefore, I, I think it's appropriate if, if the board is going to withhold access to our, again, fiscal officer through threatening letters from outside counsel, that the board take on that responsibility. And, and maybe now we'll have actual response and production of numerous records that have been unfulfilled. And I, I do believe that this will allow our fiscal officer the time and attention to her elected office's duty since this board has refused to support her in her requests for an assistant or, or any other kind of support.
That's not true. Mrs. Mrs. Brown, I've seen her help Ms. Mary, so that's not true. She's helped her, we've helped whatever needs to be done. And you keep speaking for her. You continue to do that. She has a, she is an elected fiscal officer. She can speak for herself.
And I'm speaking.
And second of all, let's talk about her, the records. The reason why we did that public record, um, the reason why we got our attorneys involved was because, tell the lie. Why, why, why did you go into, why, why would, why did you send a letter to our party mail, email to act, so they can get into our database, so she can have access to the database?
You're asking what I sent?
I'm asking Ms. Mary.
It was part of, it's a part of the fiscal office, and I have a right, the employee handbook says that I have rights to every.
Before you have.
Passwords and everything to all the.
You're not before you, though, you're elected official.
Yeah, but since the fiscal officer has a right to all the keys and all the passwords, and what I didn't get responses or cooperation, then I would just.
You didn't have keys and access to different things? Well, well, let's just say this, Ms. Mary. You, I've seen you have access to whatever you needed in this office. I've never seen where you could not get into things or have keys. Now, back to, um, I know Mr. Evans wanted access to everybody's emails, which you didn't get. Uh, right, right.
You did not want.
Oh, yeah, yes, you did.
General emails.
Yes, it is.
General emails.
Um, and we, from the day that we took our seats, anytime that there was a public record request, we went through our emails, we fulfilled them, and we got them over to you so you could read that. That's what we were doing. So.
Mr. Sly can attest that that is not true.
Yeah.
You said no records exist, and I provide.
I don't care if Mr. Sly did. I'm talking to you. I'm talking to Ms. Mary. I'm not talking to Steve.
Well, with little access and minimal cooperation, I can't fulfill the records request sufficiently, and I do refuse to.
No, you're not talking to her. This is a special, Julie. This special is not.
So it's our responsibility.
Again, it's the same people that you recruit, your minions. The same people that you recruit to come in to start struggling, you lie. You don't tell the truth. And it has to stop. It has to stop, Mr. Evans. Is that all for you, Ms. Mary?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. Trustee comments?
Are you going to order or?
Mr. Evans, you go ahead.
I'd just like to announce that I've gotten a lot of questions about aggregations since that letter, opt-out letter came out for Trevel, and a lot of people don't realize that the energy harbor that's Trevel's supplier, um, you can opt out and select a different supplier for lower rate. The county that came here and suggested that we go with their aggregator just announced they secured a ten percent savings over what we passed here. So if we would have just went with the county, we would have saved ten percent. That's a lot. Uh, but this board decided to shove it through without any other presentations when others were begging to present. So if you go onto the Energy Choice site, uh, there's four of them that, the same term, twenty-four months. It's a five-point-two percent savings, I believe. Uh, you could actually get the same rate as, as what Trevel did, or even longer term if you think rates are going up. If you wanted nineteen months, you could get even more savings, I think about ten percent. Uh, so that's out there. We should call it the energy aggravation, not aggravation. Because we had the fiscal producer's duty to pick the best one at the lowest rates for our residents. When they voted this in, that's what, that they were expecting us to do, but this board decided not to. Uh, and that's, that's a real shame. Uh, regarding, like I said, the framework our, uh, this work holder indicated, we, we weren't in it, we ignored that. Again, it was another request that was just ignored.
Because you were out there on social media. You are, you're in time, they don't have anything to do with you.
This is my time.
Tell the truth.
You, you were sent a request for us to join, and I did have a question. We were talking about school safety and that. Did, Ms. McKee, were you approached by the school about a sidewalk from a connecting community to, to the school?
No.
You were not?
No.
Okay.
Were you?
And then, uh, I became aware of them. Uh, but as far as, uh, like I said, the, the aggregation, that this costs our residents money, and they have an opportunity to choose another, another supplier. And again, even residents say, work together. But it's obvious, Ms. McKee, Mr. Johnson, you do not want to work together. You do not include the whole board and agenda items. You do not include information part of the meeting or even at, at any time. Records requests are not fulfilled. Even, I as a trustee have had to do public records requests to try to get information, and those are not complied with. So I understand our fiscal officer's frustration when they come in, and if you read her response, she has to state, I don't have any responsive that I have access to. But Ms. McKee, you gave yourself an secretary access, and you refused to. And you lied when you said, I wanted everybody's email. No, no elected officials, no, no elected officials, and that's on record. I wanted general email because areas of this township have been locked for me. Mr. Johnson took those keys. As far as I'm concerned, this don't.
Please interrupt, Mr. Evans. Thank you. All right, you're sure?
I mean, you build everybody's engine.
Yeah, that's all he does, that's all he does is lie. You know, it's, he just, in another way.
People are smarter than that.
Yeah, I love you.
I've got proof.
You always say that.
It's good enough. Trevel costs us money, that's proof.
Let's go to, I'm going to just say, make it clear, I will support the Ohio Township Association. I am not here to support another commission. That's why I supported Trevel as a board. So you can support whoever you choose to support, Mr. Evans. But under the Ohio Township Association, Trevel has worked with the, the association for a long time. And I know you are trying to work with the county, um, which they've worked with a lot of the villages in regards to, um, the aggregation.
And save them money, ten percent.
Well, for now, let's see where it goes.
For the next two years.